The launch of this program. And it's hard to believe that it's only a year and a half old compared to all the things that are going on with it. So just a quick overview of where we've gone with this program. One, if you've flown recently, you know that there's a high demand in this industry. So if you've seen headlines, you know that there are problems with workforce in this industry. So it is very high wage, high demand. And there are a lot of partners who want to work together to make sure there's a strong workforce in this area. We had our digital media technology students actually make a very short video to highlight some pieces about the program. So I know videos are always interesting here. So. It's in there. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Want to leave their current jobs. That's one in four people. But what if we didn't have to work in number five? What if your office was ever-changing, always moving, some of the best views this world has to offer? Many pilots feel that they are living their dream, but that is just the everyday reality of flight. With over 5,000 airports in the United States alone, you can be sure your commute will be ever-changing, with flexibility unmatched by any other line of work. Open the doors to aviation, and you'll find a large welcoming community ready to help. So what would you choose? Sitting behind a desk for hours upon hours every day, or taking to the skies, traveling the country? Choose to fly.
So you may be asking the question, and the answer is no. You can't join the academy. You're a little bit too old. It's only for juniors and seniors. But it was a fun little video to highlight that. This is in huge demand, and it's a lot of fun, too. It's a great opportunity for students who are interested. Little story. When we were working on the development of this program, the word got out that we were thinking about the program, and we were talking with industry partners about it. And at one of the open houses, we were talking with a student who was very excited. He wanted all the questions. We didn't have a room to talk about this. He just came and talked with us. And so as we were talking with this student, we asked his name, and he said, "Well, my name is Jett." And he said that he already has a pilot's license. And he said, "There's nothing like this. We need to have this program up and running and to have it going." And so there are other jets out there who are interested in this area, and we're trying to meet that demand. As far as pilots' demand and aviation growth, it's really outpacing the labor capacity. So you can see in the chart that the supply will not meet the demand. And so how can we help meet that demand? There will be many opportunities. As far as commercial maintenance technicians, which is another area that we're looking at, the same thing is true. And that is why when you go to fly, there are problems with flights. They don't have pilots. They don't have maintenance people. They don't have all the chain of workers within this area. So it's a great area to go into. Little history. We began this back in 2018. And we had a lot of partners that we started with and continue to be in support of the program that we have at STA. So there are numbers, a number of partners around the Kansas City area, and we've also worked with partners in other places in the country as well. So a little history. Back in fall of 2018, it started with a tour with one of our partners, AEA, or Aircraft Electronics Association. They were currently working with one of our instructors and took a tour and then posed the idea, "Well, have you thought about aerospace and aviation in particular?" Because we, at that time, had an aerospace engineering program. And we said, "Well, we're kind of far from KCI, and we've done some things with Lee Summit Airport, but we've not thought about it." And so they sat down and shared the huge need. And so at that point, we began doing research over the next few years to put this program in flight, so to speak. So in the spring, we met with more partners and actually talked to other best or model programs, best practice programs and model programs in the country. How are they doing it, and what could we do? In the summer, Mr. Joe Mullins gave a presentation along with, actually, he gave a presentation. He is, was, one of the partners with UCM, and they have one of the few aviation programs in the country that has their own airport. So we were a great partner. Were able to partner with them, and they were a great partner to us. So then Joe and I actually presented to the board of the aeronautic commissioners in Lee Summit in the fall. We shared with our advisory board that we were building what we were doing, and we created some action teams to look at fleshing out the curriculum. What could the certifications be? And who are the industry partners at that point were missing and we needed to add? In the fall, we proposed to LSR-7 administration for this program that it would be a new program. And then it was approved. And in the spring, we worked through the development with our advisory partners for the curriculum, made it into a CTE course with DESI, so a career and technical education course. And then we also began the search for our instructor. In the summer, we had a conversation with FAA. They were so impressed with it. As some of you may remember, Administrator Dixon from the FAA flew from DC to help launch this program. And then in the fall, we launched the program. So there are seven different areas, which are the main different sectors within aerospace, aviation. So a pilot, a professional pilot, aerospace engineering, avionics. So if you think Garmin, that's avionics with navigation, communication, and the technology that goes into the front of the plane that the pilot interacts with. Aviation mechanics, so those who are working on the maintenance for the planes. Drone pilot. And that sounds like just a hobby. It's not anymore. Right now, the FAA is working on policies for drones that will work in commerce, and even to the extent of transporting people within the next five years, which is beyond what I can even imagine. But they're working on policies for that right now. And then aviation management that goes into airport. And then, of course, military aviation, which is a great pathway for students to get flight experience. So those are the seven different pathways. I'm going to have Mr. McKee, who's one of our instructors, go through some of the components of the class that we've built now.
Thanks for letting us talk about the program. As Dr. Bonnison mentioned in the past slide, the program is designed to let students pivot in the direction that they want to go to, whether it be pilot, mechanic, and whatnot. So what we try to do is give them a very broad base of knowledge to build upon as they proceed towards a more direct route. So within the course, we offer 11 dual-college credit hours through UCM. So we start off with aviation history, so we have an idea of how we got to where we're at right now. Aeronautics class that we get into basic fundamentals of flight, aerodynamics, and whatnot. And then the second semester, we start in on our UAS program. So the students learn everything that they need to learn to get their Part 107 Commercial Drone Operator's License with the FAA. So not only are we teaching the students how to fly the drones, we're not teaching them just to, so they can have the ability to, you know, take photos for relitors or for weddings, videographies. We're getting into some pretty high-level applications with orthomosaic mapping, LiDAR mapping, that we can produce, the students can produce survey-grade maps that engineers and architects can design off of. So let's say we had a five-acre lot. In the past, we'd have two surveyors go out there for maybe two days, taking control points. What we can do now is with our equipment, we can go out there, fly it within 30 minutes, take hundreds or thousands of photos or laser images, and put it through our computer software to generate these maps that can be used, like I said, at engineering firms or with architects. We also teach them how to do various types of infrastructure inspections, like multispectral. We can fly up on top of the building. We can set the parameters of our multispectral camera to pick up a certain temperature range and set that temperature range, and let's, whatever color, let's say red. We can fly it up to that air conditioning unit and pick out components that are operating out of tolerance. So the students get to have some, learn some really high-level stuff that, as they go off to college or whatever direction they go, you know, if they go to college instead of flipping hamburgers, now they can go get a job at a, like a surveying company, an engineering company, making $30 an hour while they're going through school. Then the school year is finished up with our private pilot requirements. We'll teach them everything that they need to learn to pass their private pilot written examination. And even though that's the second, in the second semester, from day one, we put them into our FAA-certified flight simulators, where we're teaching them basic procedures, radio communications, basic navigation, and having them do that throughout the year. So by the time they've graduated the course, they've taken their written examination, they're ready to get into the actual airplane, and they're basically going to know how to fly that airplane for the most part. Now, granted, it'll be a little bit different, but they're going to know the components, they're going to know some of the basic navigation. Okay. So in this slide, is, goes over kind of some of the things that we go over, learn with our drones. The drone in this photo is a photo of one of the drones that we fly. We're, that we were able to purchase through UCM. That is a $50,000 drone. So we start off on some of the smaller, less expensive ones, and then work our way up to a little bit more expensive equipment. Here's a photo of one of our flight simulators. We have two static units right now that, they're full cockpit. You get into them, and it looks and acts just like a regular airplane. And they have panels that we can pull out and rearrange them to simulate different types of aircraft. So we have a couple of Cessna 172 units, a Beech Baron, which is a twin-engine airplane, a Cirrus, if you know what that is. It flies with a joystick off to the side, and a Piper Arrow, which is a single-engine high-performance aircraft. Next week, we'll be getting our third flight simulator that was purchased through the Missouri Workforce Development, that they provided the funds to purchase that unit. We're also looking at building VR stations that the students will wear VR helmets, and then we have the controls, and it's more an immersed feeling where you look backwards and you're looking in the back of the airplane, and so we can learn in that way as well. Okay. Here's a VR headset example of one. I'm going to turn it over to one of my students and let him kind of talk about his experience so far with the course. Ethan Unruh.
So, my name is Ethan Unruh, and I'm a senior attending at the Aerospace Academy. And we've learned about aviation history, aeronautics, basic flight procedures in our flight simulators. And we've learned different radio terminologies, and flown very, various UAS drone aircraft. And our class is currently finishing up our Part 107 Commercial Drone License. And we'll begin working towards passing our FAA Private Pilot Written Examination. And then, and then, so, so that's like half of what you need to get in order to become a private pilot. And that's just some of the stuff that we're doing in class. Some of my plans for the future is I plan on going into aerospace engineering, field of aerospace engineering, and I plan to go to SMT in Rollin, Missouri for that, and pursue that. So just a little bit about the program.
He was a little nervous to come up to DIAS and talk, so I think did a good job. So with this program, we're excited because with the three-axis flight simulator, it was supposed to come, there were supply chain delays, and it was supposed to come maybe a month from now, and they just informed us today? Yeah, today, that they're going to move that up. We're going to try to make it happen next week. So it would be great to get that in sooner than what we had. But we have a number of students who have the benefit of this program to get hands-on experience that there's really nothing like it in the entire metro area. So thank you for the opportunity to serve kids in this way.
We have a few questions, if we could. Dr. Buck?
First, I want to give kudos to Dr. Bonnison for leading this. When he said he had to get DESI to approve it, DESI had no coursework. And they said, "Hey, it sounds great. You're going to have to create it, and we'll have to review it." So we have set something for the whole state. The state has nothing like this. Dr. Bonnison, obviously, you have Mr. McKee here, and you have another instructor. You have interesting folks teaching with some experiences that most people don't realize school districts can have, employed, working in special programs like this. Can you talk about the background? Or, Mr. McKee, can you come up and talk about your background and what your background of your other instructor is?
Yeah, it took me months and months and months to find him. So I was literally calling airports in other states, in Florida and Wisconsin and all over Missouri, trying to find an instructor. Because the state of Missouri said we had to have somebody with a pilot's license, and because of the dual-credit, we had to have somebody with a master's degree. And usually, it's one or the other, not both. And trying to find someone with both was very hard to find. And everything just fell together because Mr. McKee happened to live in Lee Summit, but he was working elsewhere in another state. And believe it or not, he was tired of flying back and forth, and it just so happened that it worked out. But it came through me calling Springfield, who said, "I think I know somebody. Call Kansas City Downtown Airport and talk to so-and-so." And at that right time, I happened to get ahold of Mr. McKee, and we were able to get in touch after I called all over. But he happened to be in town at that time from out of state. So tell us a little bit about your experience as far as working with airports and your past experience.
Actually, I'm going to go back to talking about, a little bit about the aviation industry right now. Right now is a perfect time for students to go into aviation, unlike when I got into aviation. So when I started going in at the late '80s, you still had all the Vietnam-era pilots in the system. You had just deregulated the airlines in '78, and you had Top Guns, who everyone wanted to be the next maverick. So it drove wages down, jobs down. So I pivoted. My undergraduate degree was in aviation technology, professional pilot. I pivoted and went to their master's program and got a degree in aviation safety and airport management. So for over 20 years, I was airport director, and for around four years, I was, I worked for an engineering company. And as Dr. Bonnison mentioned, I was commuting back and forth between Kansas City and Jackson International Airport. And this job opened up. My wife had, you know, "I think it's time for you to have a change. I think you'd enjoy this." So I took advantage of it, and I'm having a ball with the students. So it's a really neat program. I would have killed to have something like this in high school. So, you know, when I went off to college, I knew airplanes flew up in the air. That was about it. So when I went to school, I had other fellow students that had parents that owned airplanes or were airline pilots, and they were so far ahead of me. This program gives these students that same type of, you know, kickstart to go down to UCM, K-State, or wherever, and hit the ground running. So it's a really neat program, and as a Lee Summit citizen, I'm really glad this program exists.
Thank you for sharing that. So one more thing, I want to, partnerships are so important. So you heard about some of the industry partnerships. The last year of the chamber went to Jeff City as a legislative piece. And during that visit, we, you know, I'll give kudos to Matt Baird. Matt set up some folks to come speak to us, and Marty Leathers from the higher ed with the Workforce Development was there. And from that conversation, we invited him out. I think Board President Campbell came to that, and Dr. Bonnison was there at that meeting. And we casually said, "Hey, we'd like to have this multi-plane simulator." It costs $180,000 to put it in and install it, all right? Buy it and install it. They paid for it. And so that started with a conversation with Matt Baird, and taking a trip to Jeff City with Matt and the chamber. So our partnerships matter, not just with industries that he mentioned, but also other partners we have. So thank you to Dr. Bonnison for being willing to think on the fly with us, because, no pun intended, because I think it benefits our kids. Our kids are going to have an amazing experience. Again, according to FAA Dixon, who runs the entire nation's flight program, and used to be vice president of, I think it was Delta before that, we're the number one in the nation in what we're doing already. So thank you for that.
Great. Board Member Foley?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first one is actually for Ethan. So this is an easy one, don't worry. I'm just curious, what enticed you to enter this program? Since it's new, what was it that was the draw to you?
So it actually started around seventh grade. You know, some classes get a little bit boring. I decided to start doodling in classes, and that's whenever just the love of rockets and whatnot just fell upon me. And then from there, I took a course in engineering at Odessa, and then I loved that class to death. And then I was like, "Oh, Summit Tech, they have an aerospace engineering program." So I took that my junior year and loved it. And then I heard about the Aerospace Academy program, and I was like, "All right, I'm going to go for it." Because I'm already, I'm already two feet deep, so might as well go, go all the way for it, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, sure. If I can go ahead and ask. Okay. So for the Aerospace Academy, can anyone sign up, or are there prerequisites? How does that work if students, you know, hear this presentation and they're interested? What should they do?
Absolutely. So students can apply, just like any of our STA programs. The GPA requirement is a 2.5 GPA for all of our programs at STA. Then the prerequisite is actually Algebra I for students, and so they have to have a B- or higher. These are juniors or seniors going into the program. So a student would be a junior or senior at any of the schools that send to STA. It's helpful if they have some interaction with aviation, but it's not required.
Okay. My last question is, just how can the board continue to support you?
I think, one, understanding, you know, how unique this program is, and understanding that this gives students, you know, like Ethan and other students, Jett, you know, as we mentioned, an opportunity that they wouldn't have really anywhere else, because we're able to pool resources. Working with our partners, Missouri Workforce, UCM has partnered with us, that we're able to have other simulators, the drone that was mentioned. But that partnership came from just having a good relationship with our community partners and being willing to talk about the program. So I think, you know, as you are in the community, knowing about it, and as people, you know, have questions, engaging, I think that is huge, because, again, it's a unique opportunity. But it's all about partnerships and everyone willing to come together and share. Because with this equipment, you know, having it each building is just not possible. So having a shared experience allows so many students to be able to do these unique things.
And I'll add to that. So Tuesday night, we have a joint meeting with the city. I've been working with the city, some of us have been working with the city for over a year, about their expansion at the airport. We have conceptual agreements of us moving this program and being at the airport, which will have some major added benefits. So as an agenda item, Dr. Bonnison will be there talking about on Tuesday night, that partnership with the city. So support with that, because eventually, that will have a dollar amount.
Great. Board Member, Vice President, Friggi?
Thank you. Just a couple, a quick question, Dr. Bonnison. Number one, how many students are currently in the program? And how many of those are LSR-7?
I'm going to let Mr. McKee answer that question. I know last year, we had seven, and this year, we have 18? 17 total? So we're working to increase that number. As far as specific, out of those 17 students, I'll let you answer.
I think it's roughly around 17. I think it's roughly around seventeen, I would say.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
Board Member Sparks?
Vice President Fritchie asked the question about the numbers. My question is, we had an increase from seven to seventeen. What did we do for that increase? And what is the outreach to our high schools to try to improve the enrollment in this course?
So, we are working on different recruitment efforts to get the word out. Going to, there's not a aviation class, you know? So, it's not like maybe Family Consumer Science or Engineering where there's a prerequisite class. So, we have to find those jets, if you will, who are out there, who are interested. And so, we have opportunities where we go and share. And like today, we have our assistant principals, we have teachers going out to schools and sharing information about the programs. We have our open house nights. And so, we have a shameless plug here. At February second, from six to eight PM, there's another open house night where anyone from the community can come and actually see the flight simulators and drones in action. We're also working to plan a specific night that's only about aviation. So, where students can come and learn. The key is, a lot of times, students don't know. We have a lot of wonderful programs in this district, so many. As Dr. Buck has said, probably more than most or any other school district in the state of Missouri. And what's so hard is, with all the information, it's hard to get the right student to the right program. And so, we're working hard to align with students who have identified in surveys, I'm interested in this, and trying to get the right information to them. So, we have surveys available where students can sign up. And it's called Path to STA, designed by one of our software instructors. And then, students will get just-in-time information about just the program they're interested in. There are emails that are customized for each student or parent based upon what they're interested in. So, it's just, we're trying to connect those dots, get the word out by sharing many different ways. So, we're working on it. We don't have it all solved, but it's really about trying to get out there and then trying to bring them in.
What is our max capacity at this time to be able to hold?
So, forty-eight students, twenty-four in the morning and twenty-four in the afternoon.
One last question. I, well, this is not actually a question. This is actually a conversation with the board. I think this is great. I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. I would like to see us as a board to really see how we can enhance access to STA, this program and other programs. And so, while the open houses and things are great, I would like to see us possibly see how we can fund bus field trips where the kids are already here in our care and actually going to STA and actually being able to see those programs. And so, if we can talk about that as a board, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
I think that's great. Thank you, Board Member Sparks. And great questions all the way around. I think, Mr. McKee, you hit on something that really spoke to me. When you mentioned that this gives our students the experience as they're thinking about the careers in education or aviation that they wouldn't have unless they had a parent or a family member that was a pilot, or maybe they owned a plane. And so, that speaks to the equity of this and helping all of our students see that opportunity in these careers. So, just appreciate you pointing that out and appreciate you all and the hard work that you're doing around this. And so, Board Member Sparks, let's continue to discuss that idea. And, great. If Board Members, any other questions before we wrap up? Well, thank you all three. Great presentation and thank you for your time. All right, we'll move now on to item 2.02 and begin a discussion with our district's student-level D teams. And Shelley Sanders and Dr. Berger will look to you to direct us on what you'd like us to do next steps.
Well, first off, before we begin, I want to thank you for this opportunity. We have some amazing students over here and we fed them burgers, so they should be nice and happy and very talkative. So, they're super excited to be here. I just wanted to share that our CSIP Action Plan 2.3 is all about student voice, right? And looking for systematic ways to incorporate student voice into our decision-making. And so, we're truly appreciative of that work extending to the board. And in my work with the students last year, one of the first things they said was, we need to, we need to talk to them, right? And so, this is an opportunity for them to share. I will ask that they come up and introduce themselves. They have on name tags. And then, once they introduce themselves, they're gonna go and have a seat at their table. And they already know what table they're gonna go to. And then, Board Members, you all are partnered up. Do you want me to tell you who your partner is so you know? Or do you know who your partner is? It's on the table. So, we have Board Member, at Table One, we have Board Members Eslic and Sparks. Table Two, we have Board Members Campbell and Murdock. I was about to call you Board Member Ryan. You good with that? And then, at Table Three, we have Board Members Fritchie and Foley. And what we'll do is, we'll have ten minutes of conversation. There's questions that are at the table for you all. Of course, you can deviate out of that, but those are the questions that the students had in advance. And what I was able to do last week was go out to each high school and meet with students. And this is just a part of our D team. There are more students who just weren't able to make it tonight, do the other commitments. And the students were able to give me topics that were really pressing to them, that they wanted to talk to you all about. So, the questions that are there came from topics that were student-provided, okay? And even, some of their questions and comments that came up in the conversations are actually the questions that are there. And then, we'll do a ten-minute conversation. And then, we'll rotate, and the kids will rotate clockwise. And I'll get on the mic and say, you got a two-minute warning, and that'll help you. What I think is gonna happen is that you all are gonna say, we need more time, right? So, I did tell the students that we will be out, like, we'll be done about six o'clock or so. At the end of those three rotations, then you all will be able to go back to the dais and have a conversation about what you learned from kids. Because I also think that's the important, an important piece, too, is to be able to process and reflect on what you gathered from those conversations, okay? Are you all ready? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Jessica Porter. I'm a senior at Lee Summit High School.
Hi, I'm Tenay Cunningham and I'm a freshman at Lee Summit High School.
Hi, I'm Olivia Sanders and I'm a junior at Lee Summit High School.
Hi, I'm Erin Bagby and I'm a junior at Lee Summit North High School.
Hi, my name is Alia Graves. I'm a junior at Lee Summit North High School.
Hi, I'm Alia Crudeup and I'm a junior at Lee Summit North High School.
My name is Frank Sparks and I go to, I'm a junior and I go to Lee Summit North.
Hi, my name is Isaac Shelton. I'm a junior at Lee Summit North High School.
And there's one more student I would like to introduce. It is Tree Stout from Lee Summit West High School. They had play practice, so they will be here momentarily and then we'll pluck them in with a group, okay? Group number one for Board Members, group number two, and then, three. We probably should've turned them around.
Yeah, we didn't think about that.
So, I just want to give a two-minute warning with your current groups.
Okay, that is your two minutes for this group, so go ahead and... I know I'm getting the look. I knew this was gonna happen. How much more time do you need?
One more minute.
One more minute?
One more minute.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'm gonna get on the mic. It's time to rotate. They're not going away. Go ahead and say "thank you". Thank you. They're being held hostage. This is a two-minute warning. That is the two-minute warning. I'm gonna repeat it for another two minutes. Okay, that is the final two-minute warning. Please thank... Then nobody's moving. That was four extra... that was two extra minutes. You need two more? Okay, one more, two more, okay.
I love that the kids look and she's like, "Mm-mm." When I do it.
Okay, that's your time. Say thank you. Okay, that is another two-minute warning. I will give you one more and then we have to stop. You have forty more seconds. That's your timer. Please say thank you. And students, it's six o'clock and I told you I would get you out so you can go out there and I'll get you back in that room, okay?
Yeah. Okay. I got my own keys.
Oh, duh.
Okay, this is your two-minute warning. Oh my goodness! Okay, that is another two-minute warning. I will give you one more and then we have to stop. That's your timer. Please say "thank you." Okay, and students, it's six o'clock and I told you I would get you out so you can go out there and I'll get you back in that room, okay?
Yeah.
So this is just the time to be able to talk about what you learned. It's, I'm gonna sit down and be quiet and take notes and, and all that good stuff.
Vice President Fritchy?
I'm willing to start this conversation and they can join in when they come back. Number one, I love it that the students took time out of their evening to come up and sit with us and talk with us and share some of their concerns. The questions that they came up with were very perceptive. The ones that, you know, that, that our kids, the kids we talked with on, in our side focused on access to courses and the sense of belonging. Those were the two that they, I think that all three groups, groups really wanted to talk with about us the most. I think they were very candid and honest in their, in their comments to us and I just loved hearing from them. I think some of it is on the access question. I think they just don't know what the opportunities are sometimes about what they can access and how to access those. What I heard was that, you know, their teachers, like let's say their advisory teachers, ones who are, who are trying to help them, sometimes they don't know how to help them, even though they may have been told a little bit about, you know, how to help the kids access courses that they, you know, they're not experts on all the courses. Each advisory teacher's not an expert. Also, I think I found out that the, some of the kids, they don't understand that all they have to do is walk in after they get off the bus in the morning, go straight to the counselor's office and make an appointment. They can make an appointment with their counselor. They didn't know they could do that. And just ask their counselor questions about some of these programs and how to access them and things like that. So to me, you know, maybe we're not providing the right opportunities for them to understand what their options are in terms of accessing the information. So that was good information. And as far as the belonging piece, I, I do want to say that they were talking about those teachers that made them feel welcome and helped them feel belong, a sense of belonging in their classroom. Were the teachers that were a little bit vulnerable and were willing to step out and share a little bit about themselves and learn more about their students. And they said you can tell when you walk in within the first, you know, few minutes of class if they're really sincere and if they really mean it. And I, I liked tho- those comments because I think they're right about that. Kids can tell if you're faking it or if you're real. And then when you're real, you connect. So anyway, that's, that's kind of my summary of what I heard. Thank you.
Great. Board Member Foley?
I was in the same group as Vice President Fritchy. So the only thing I really would kind of just add on with that is that it seemed like we could do better at just making things very easy and user-friendly for students in how to apply for IB classes or how to access the availability of what STA and the other programs have to offer. It kind of seemed like there was varying responses from the different students as to how much they know about whether, whether they get enough information on what all the different options are. Somebody even mentioned that, you know, one of their friends told them they got the opportunity to go and spend time at the zoo and they had no idea that this was even an option. So I think really just making it very user-friendly and having maybe some repetition for the students might help them just realize, you know, you do have all these options, here's how to get to them, and then bring it up again just so that they can really, after they've had time to process things, know that all these different options are available, I think would be good.
Great. Do we want to just kind of go around? Board Member Sparks, do you want to share?
Board Member Eslic. So ours, for first, let me say what our topic source, which was student and staff interactions and then student-to-student interactions was our topic. And one of the things that I think was very positive to hear is that all of the students that came through said that the majority of their interactions with teachers are good interactions. That there is a, however, there is an amount of teachers that is a very minimum that they're not good interactions. And so while I celebrate that the majority of their experiences are great, I think that it's important as a district that we, and I'm going to say this, weed out those bad experiences that our kids are having. And the only way to do that, I think, is the continued PD that we're doing, the continued training, so that every day that our kids come into our buildings, that every day should be a good interaction. Bad days, because we all have bad days, but at least there should be great interactions amongst adults and kids at any cost. So I think that was good to be noted. Some of the other, some of the questions that we had asked was, can you share a time where you had some positive interactions with staff? Another thing that was very good to hear was the mentor rooms, their advisory rooms, that the kids said that anything that they pretty much could need are in those rooms. So they were talking about the hygiene products, food, snacks, books and things of that nature. So I thought that was very positive to hear, that they knew that they could at least go to that advisory room and consider it a, a good place to be. Another kid mentioned safe places, that they all feel like that they have safe places within their buildings. That was also, I think, good to hear. I think when it came to student inter, also I'll say, and I'll leave some for you. I'll also say that the interactions with student and, and student and staff, to Vice President Fritchy's point, the kids just said that they just know, that they can, they get the vibe if it's going to be good interactions or not. And one of the things that we kind of went kind of free on some of our questions, what we asked, when those times happen, are there things in place to try to mend those relationships that did not quite gel like maybe some other ones did naturally? And I think some of them said, no, there's really not, really nothing there to kind of be a mediator between student and staff or even maybe student and student, to be able to mediate some of those conflicts. So I thought that was something that they pulled out, interactions that they could, to improve. Oh, another thing and then I'll stop. I kind of gave a free question of just saying, hey, between one to 10, when it came to student voice, how well do you feel heard? And so we kind of had some ranges, I think the highest, it was one to 10. The highest I heard was seven, the lowest I heard is four. We did have a nine? Okay, 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 we had a nine. We had a, we had a nine all the way, okay. So we had a nine all the way down to four. And so there was a range there. And so I just would like to see us as a board, as a district, to make sure that we're amplifying student voice. And through that point, I kind of asked, have we, have you ever, and I think I asked the last group, is how often do you have a setting like this? To just simply sit at a table with adults and have conversations? And I believe all of them said, one, well, two of them I think said none, and then they kind of talked about it. And I think there was maybe one or two occasions that they was able to recall where they had it. And so I think that it's important to us as a district that we create opportunities, because our kids are willing to talk. I believe we all saw that today. And I, and it was good to hear them talk. And so I want to see us, give them a bigger voice to know that they're not just being, that they're not just here, but they're actually being listened to and that we're hearing what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Murdock?
Yeah, I think, I don't want to repeat a lot of what has been said because I think we have a lot of crossover in terms of what the kids wanted to talk about, what we wanted to talk about with them. But I do want to finish on what your last point was right there, which was the kids want to talk because we had multiple groups who were like, come to us. Right? Like, because we were asking them, you know, right at the very end, is there something the board can even do, right? Understanding what our role is, but even then it was, come to our building, right? And let us show you our, our building and what we're doing and sit down and actually have some of these same discussions, but, but come to our building to do it. And I think that that's a wise comment because this room is different than what it would be if we were in these kids' media center or if we came to a classroom, even if it was after school, right? It's still a different feel, it's their environment, where I think you would get even more, probably more students involved, more comments. And I think we would learn even more than what we did tonight, which was a ton, by the way. On that same note, on comments, and this will be the only other thing that I'm going to say, because we did ask them as a part of our student engagement and being included and stuff like that, we asked them about the surveys that they take as a part of it. And I think it's important to know that the general answer was is we understand the need for them. They need to be shorter, they need to take less time of our class. But the thing that I wrote down that I thought was the most important is, is there a way to allow them to type a comment in? They will recognize or be more willing to share why the, they are answering the way they're answering if there is a box below it to tell, that they can tell somebody, I don't belong, I feel like I don't belong? And then they actually get to type, this is why I don't feel like I belong. Whereas they currently don't feel like they have that option to be able to essentially expand on their answer. I mean, that's what we're really saying here, right? To your point, they're willing to share when asked, so give them the chance. So that's, that's where I will finish tonight. Thanks.
Thanks, Board Member Murdock. Board Member Eslic?
Thank you. Okay, well, Board Member Sparks covered a lot. I'll just start by saying I really enjoyed having the opportunity to sit with these kids. I'm sure you all feel the same way, but they were all very well-spoken and just very at ease with communicating with us and I think it was really great to hear directly from them. So I hope we have an opportunity to do more things like this with students. Not necessarily in a board meeting, but any, anytime. I just think it was great, so. So some of the things that Board Member Sparks maybe didn't cover, that he left for me, thank you. So in our first group, I thought it was really interesting because we had the three students who were from Lee Summitt High School and so they were kind of talking a lot about capturing kids' hearts and some of their feedback from that. So I thought it was worthwhile to share since that was something that we as a board had approved a couple of months ago. So some of the things that they kind of brought up, maybe problems, I won't say a problem, opportunity to improve, is a feeling that this social contract, which I'm not sure if it was discussed with any of the rest of the board, but this was the portion of capturing kids' hearts where students and their teachers at the beginning of each semester, so they did it last semester with their current list of teachers, and then with this semester, they would do it again, where they sit down and talk about this, these are the things I expect from you and as a student, this is what I expect or would like from other students and from the teacher. And they kind of go through and that's, that's their contract and they all sign it. So this, these students' feedback was that it was a little bit juvenile, is kind of how I would say. They felt like they were kind of in kindergarten or in grade school with kind of the actions that they would have to do and that the teachers and the students didn't really follow along with it. So when they felt like there was a, an offense that they would, you know, kind of respond with, I don't remember the three things, but there was, essentially they call the student or the teacher out on, hey, you were disrespectful or this was hurtful or whatever. And then they're supposed to respond with, they call it two put-ups, like two compliments. And so even if a student would say that to a, a teacher, maybe there would be a little bit of sarcasm with the, the put-up. So I think that some of the feedback, it would be worthwhile to get more feedback from more students on how they're feeling about that because from these students at least, they didn't feel like it was really helping, whatever the issues were. They also felt like the issues were coming from their freshman class in particular that had spent, you know, their entire middle school during COVID years and they didn't know how to come into high school and be high schoolers. And they felt like that class of students has since improved, not necessarily because of this program, but just because they've matured, they've had some time to adjust. So that's some of the more in-depth feedback, very specific to Lee Summitt High School, but I thought that was worth sharing, maybe looking into a little bit more deeply. Another point that I'll bring up that the students, again, from Lee Summitt High School brought up was staff-to-staff talking poorly about other students. Like one staff member talking badly about a student to a different staff member that maybe hasn't had that student yet and kind of souring that whole relationship before that student even has an opportunity to interact with that staff member. So that was something that was brought up that I, you know, I thought was a good thing to improve. I feel like I'm talking about all the negative stuff, so let me find something good, because there were, there were good things. I just think Board Member Sparks probably talked about a lot of them. But I will, I will echo that one of the good things that came out of that whole conversation with all the students is at, whether it's student to their classroom teacher or student to someone they interact with in a club or a sport, every student seemed to be able to say that they felt like they belonged in some element of their building. It may not necessarily be with every teacher, because not everybody's going to get along with every teacher and I think that's, that's fair. Personality conflicts, you know, not every teacher is going to have that level of engagement that's genuine with every student because that's just not their personality. But every student did communicate that they felt at home somewhere in their building. So I thought that was really encouraging to hear. And I think that's all I'm gonna, that's all I have, so.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Eslic. Board Member Foley?
Thank you. I apologize, I hit my button right before Board Member Eslic brought it up. But I did have a note that I wanted to circle back to, which was that a student had mentioned the teachers talking about students to other teachers. And, and that, that really bothered me because I do feel like as each student goes into a new environment, they should have an opportunity to have a fresh start and not have someone to have a bias against them, that they're going to be a troublemaker. And the student mentioned that their friend, the one that had been talked about, ended up acting out because they thought that was already the expectation on them. And so I think that's really something that we should, you know, look at and, and advise teachers to consider. You know, when they're talking to other teachers about students, how is it going to impact the bias on that student in the future? And then encourage possibly bad behavior to continue, so.
I think really good point. And so I'll just add a couple of notes, because Ryan and I were together. Definitely, I felt the positive energy hearing about all the different clubs and activities and ways of belonging and that they felt belonging themselves in those clubs and activities and they felt like all of the students at their schools had opportunities around that belonging and they felt pretty positive that most of the students would also agree that they have belonging. The one thing that jumped out at me, well, and I'll carry that on because also they talked about, we had a couple of athletes and then another person that was, you know, more banned and things like that, but the whole football season and the community of all the kids at the games, whether you had a role on the field or were up in the stands, it just felt like everybody in the school was engaged and felt belonging on some level around the activity and finding community in that. I think clearly heard around mental health that that is a concern, that students that have mental health issues and how that's addressed in school. You know, they talked about, there's like a mental health week. Well, a blue bracelet doesn't make me feel like I belong and by the way, it doesn't resolve my depression. So I think listening to voices around that and how we as a district can think more about mental health, I think was really telling in the conversations we had. But I loved and so much appreciated them coming to us and I think that was one of the best comments was, oh, by the way, you know, we're just a few students, why don't you come to the school and talk with way more? And I think that is a great, great opportunity as well. So Board Member Sparks?
I just wanted to add this one. I just wanted to add this one because this was a point that they kind of made to me and Board Member Eslic, was the mandatory assemblies. They mentioned that, so the, basically the student was saying that, I guess they were putting together a Black History Assembly, but I guess because it wasn't like mandatory, like some of the other ones, and the ones that Board Member Eslic asked, which ones were mandatory? Sports, veterans, homecoming and then candle lighting, which we wasn't able, our time was up so we wasn't able to figure out what the candle lighting one was, but...
I can talk to you about that.
Okay. But I, I, I think that it's important that as we're making sure that our kids do have the sense of belonging in these schools, that some of the things that they individually care about, that we're also making sure that they're able to partake and that the same spotlight or the mandatory kind of sense on some of these other things, that we're kind of being consistent so that no kid feels like what they care about is not being addressed or, or inviting other kids to be a mandatory thing for other kids to have to partake in.
Great point. All right, any other comments? All right, and thank you so much to Shelley, is she here? Oh, nuts! Okay, well, please share with Shelley and with all of the students how much we appreciate them taking the time to talk with us and that this was a great event and thank her for putting together great questions, even though we veered off sometimes, that's okay. Right? We got some grace around that. All right, well, we'll go ahead with that and wrap up and then close out and move on upstairs.